Do the, uh, do the pledge of allegiance this evening, but, uh, so I've taken the liberty of asking, um, Councilmember Donovan, who is off serving our country, uh, far away from home, if he would lead us in the pledge. Thought that would be very appropriate this evening. So if everyone will rise and Councilmember Donovan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Donovan. And, uh, again, thank you for serving our country. And, uh, we think you're somewhere where the time zones are very different, and we know that's not, uh, eight forty PM for you. Anyway, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September twenty first, twenty twenty study session of Livonia City Council. This evening's agenda for the one thousand nine hundred and six regular city council meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty. We have all members of the council with us this evening. And, um, I would like to mention two things. The first is, in announcing the department heads, as I have done several times, I missed the department head who was kind of literally right in front of us at, and that's our Director of Information Services, Casey O'Neil. And, uh, again, I've said it many times, but Casey and his team, they do an amazing job all the time, but have done an absolutely incredible job through this, uh, challenging COVID time. And even though we're, we're used to the, we're used to the procedure and the Zoom meetings, all the commission meetings that took place before that didn't even have to be on the radar screen of the Information Services team, not only do they have to be on the radar screen, they have to get all the Zoom meetings set up. And they just do a phenomenal job. So my apologies and, um, in forgetting, uh, to mention that very important department head and fantastic team. And one other thing that I meant to mention in the first meeting, and I didn't, is, uh, the passing of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg last Friday. And, um, you know, no matter what your political, what your political views are, um, from every account, uh, she was not just, uh, remarkable because of her long tenure on the Supreme Court, but a lot of work that she did throughout her career and throughout her life, um, on the issues of equal opportunity. And, um, she was also joined by the first woman appointed, Sandra Day O'Connor, and, um, our condolences and thoughts to the, to the Ginsburg family and, uh, just reflecting on a really remarkable life and someone who has certainly left an indelible and important mark on our country's history. So, thank you. All right. Um, Council, do you have any, uh, Council have any announcements this evening? Yes, Councilmember Laura Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I failed at our other meeting to mention the wonderful class of nineteen seventy, um, celebrated a very special reunion on Saturday over at the Bentley High School Field. I think we're still named Bentley High School over on the field. So, um, it was very interesting to see people with gray hair, no hair, and, um, just, you know, how people have changed over the many twenty-nine years that we've been out. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and hello to all the Bentley folks that still live in Livonia and their parents and their grandparents and their children. Um, we're, we're from Bentley and couldn't be prouder. Thank you very much. No sense of humor on this council tonight. Okay.
We didn't, we, we didn't know that was humorous. We took that
Yeah.
serious and solemn announcement. So, uh, we, we were not going to laugh at that. This is important, uh, serious stuff. And congratulations to your class on its wonderful reunion.
Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Any announcements? All right. Seeing none, we'll move ahead. This is, uh, as I mentioned, this is study meeting. There will be no votes taken this evening. However, council members will offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions. But resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or a resolution referring an item to a committee or city departments for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on this evening's agenda will move on to the regular meeting on Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty, where they will officially be voted on. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are, that are taken up, um, please use either the raise, the, your raise hand button on your Zoom, if you're joining us via Zoom, or if you're on via phone, please press number nine. And when the item is called, you will be, and, and you do that when your item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you. In the minutes for this meeting, it will also let the television audience and the, and the Zoom audience and the council members know who is speaking to them. And, um, at this time, we also have the audience communication, uh, which is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda. It's an opportunity to do so. Is there anyone who would want to, um, communicate with the council during audience communication? Um, I see Mr. Moore up, and I'm going to assume Mr. Moore, you would like to address us during audience communication. And I'm a sticky unmute button. I apologize. Really, Doug, I'm trying to mute you. And I'm not having any luck. Oh, there we go.
Kathleen, if I had my hand up, I apologize.
Oh, no problem. I was hoping you had some communication force, but I
No, I didn't. I'm just waiting for the agenda.
Waiting patiently, I may add, right?
Yes.
All right. Um, with that, we, uh, move into the new, new business portion of the agenda, beginning with item number one. Um, this is a request for a block party. This comes to Michelle Johnson to be held Saturday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty, from one to ten PM on Floral Street between Curtis and Lathers with no rain date requested. And it looks like we have the petitioner with us. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. You're presenting about your block party, and you, did you want to tell us a little bit about your block party?
We were hoping to have, um, a few of our blocks together for our block party and have about fifty people, so we can kind of separate things and have games for the kids and kind of keep it a little bit safer for Halloween.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Sounds like a great event. I applaud you for doing it. I think these are great, not just for your neighborhood. I think they're good for us as a whole. So I'd offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
All right. Any objection? Seeing none, we'll place on the consent agenda. That means, Ms. Johnson, that you do not have to come back to the, the, uh, October fifth meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoy your block party, and we will hope you have great weather, great weather.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two is a request for authorization to establish a high school dual enrollment youth fire cadet program at Schoolcraft College. This comes to us from, um, this comes, this comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue, and this would be for high school students sixteen to seventeen years of age. And I believe we have, um, Robert Jen- Jensen from Livonia Fire Department, who is our training officer. And I, I hope, uh, I, I hope, uh, Robert, that I got your title correct on that. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President and Councilmembers. Uh, I'm appearing on behalf of the Fire Chief. Um, as you said, the Livonia Fire Department is requesting an approving resolution to establish a high school youth fire cadet program in order to facilitate a dual enrollment program with Schoolcraft College's, uh, Fire Training Institute. Now, this would be open to Livonia and Clarenceville School District students, as you said, ages sixteen and seventeen, who qualify for the program.
Counsel. Uh, sorry, let me flip back over here. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I just looked, uh, I, after reading the packet, there was a line in there that said, "A win-win-win." Um, "A partnership between Schoolcraft providing education and training, equipment and testing." Um, obviously now hearing that LPS plus Clarenceville, uh, that these students would be able to explore funding options that, uh, they can use in a career profession. And then obviously the partnership for Livonia Fire to maybe snag some of these cadets after they get to the program as, uh, you know, firefighters, full-time firefighters in our city. I think it's a, a wonderful thing, and, uh, kudos to everybody involved. Please keep us in, uh, you know, informed that we can share out this information on our social media when the time begun, time begins available. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Improving. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I too think this is a great idea. I do think that the police department has something similar with the PSA program. Uh, while they may be different, but, you know, trying to get, um, young people, um, interested in, in first responder roles and get to them before other agencies do, and incentivizing them and working with them to get their education done to make them, um, certifiable to eventually join our ranks. I think it's a great idea, and I think other agencies across the state are also doing things like this. So looking forward to this being successful.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Toy. And, um, Councilman McCullough, he offered an approving, correct?
You know, I did not pop it out there, but, uh,
Go ahead.
I'd be more than happy, overwhelmingly happy to offer that for consent. There's no objections.
All right. Any objections? Seeing none, we'll, that'll be on the consent agenda. Uh, thank you very much, um, Training Officer Jensen.
Thank you very much, Madam President and Councilmember.
Appreciate your service and the service of all your colleagues in our city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, item number four is a request to authorize purchase of forty cases of four-star one hundred and eighty-day briquettes. This comes to us from the Public Service Division from Clark Mosquito Control for the twenty twenty-one mosquito treatment program from budgeted funds. And, um, Mr. Moore, are you, um, are you, uh, going to address this item?
I will. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, hallelujah. Um, Council, this is the annual purchase of mosquito control briquettes that we get every year. Uh, these go into the catch basins in the, the streets and some of the parks systems. They're the three-inch-long briquettes that we pop in, usually in early to mid-part of June, and they last up to a hundred and eighty days for mosquito control.
Counsel?
Don't move.
Uh, would you like to offer it for the consent agenda?
Um, yeah, and I also want to ask a question. It's some, please. You know, this, this may seem a little off, but honestly, when I sit on my deck, I'm over on Rayburn in Livonia, the Rayburn Street, um, Doug, they're little baby mosquitoes this year. They're not even full grown. Is there, is, is there a reason for that? I don't know if you know about insects to that degree, but I, it's unusual. I, I've never seen so many mosquitoes that are real tiny. They're not, you know what I mean, a normal size.
Yeah, I've noticed they're smaller this year, too. I don't know why.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean that to be, you know, crazy or anything, but it, it just was, it just struck me that they're so small this year. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Mr. Dolly, are you going to help us understand the reason?
No, I actually, I have a mosquito-related question as well.
Please.
And I, I'll preface this with saying I have no reason for us to be alarmed by this, from my knowledge. But, um, Doug, we, uh, have heard on the news recently that there are maybe ten counties in Michigan who have, um, cases of equine encephalitis. Um, do we as a city have a contact, uh, that deals directly with the state in regards to situations like that? Are our parks monitored for that and other such viruses, uh, in the animal population? Do you have, do we have anybody, um, who's kind of on that task in the city, or no?
Not really. We would depend on, uh, Wayne County Health Department. Um, several years ago, when the Zika mosquite, well, the mosquito that carried the Zika virus showed up, uh, it was Wayne County Health Department that led the charge on that. And then we worked with some people with, uh, the, oh, the DEQ Eagle. Um, but normally, we'd work with the Health Department on that if something popped up.
Okay, but it would be the Department of Public Works that would be that Livonia agency or, or, or side of Livonia that would be dealing with those parties?
Yes, for the most part.
Okay. Thank you for the insight.
You're welcome.
All right. Use your, uh, I mean, good reminder for everyone to, uh, even though it's fall, until we have a hard freeze, to be, um, vigilant about using mosquito repellent. And, uh, other comment, uh, Mr. Moore, I have to say, you really take the cake on acceleration of seasons. Uh, you know, Target is getting their, uh, Christmas merchandise up, but man, we're already on to, uh, we're already on to summer of twenty twenty-one. So, um, Target doesn't have anything on us. Anyway, um, moving right along, we have a number four request for authorization to purchase one nine-inch disc-style brush chipper through the state contract pricing. This, too, comes to us, to us from the Public Service Division to be used by the Forestry and Roads Department from funds budgeted for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty refuse fund. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Counsel. The department is looking to replace a chipper that was purchased in two thousand and eight. Uh, this chipper would be mostly used with parks. Uh, we do lend it out to the golf courses at times when they ask. It's a smaller chipper than we use for the brush program, so that it's lighter, it's more maneuverable. Uh, we can get it into some areas where the crews are working as compared to the bigger ones. Um, it's being purchased through the state contract pricing with, uh, Bandit, and the amount for the purchase is thirty-two thousand, four hundred, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Counsel.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Dolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. This is, uh, something that we use often, and, you know, it is being purchased through a collaborative that, uh, ensures that we're receiving the best price here. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough, did you have a comment?
No, I was just gonna offer an approving. No, all good.
Uh, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. If I may, just to Mr. Moore, if I may make a quick comment, um, I just have to tell you what an outstanding job, uh, your folks have done over there. Um, once again, not to be selfish here, but on my block, um, as well as I've heard from others. You, you, your department, I, I mean, we stuck out tree branches, a bunch of us, and the next day, within twenty-four hours, they were gone. They came, they chopped them up to the point where we all said, did we even stick them out? We couldn't remember because it was so quick, the service. And it's just beyond excellence. So please, please know that people are noticing that kind of great service that we're getting, and thank you so much for doing that.
Well, thank you, and I will relay that to the foreman and the crew. We truly appreciate the kudos.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, moving right along, we go to item number five. This is a, I want to make sure we're, yes, item number five, this is request to purchase for authorization, purchase seven, semi-marked police vehicles utilized in the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid process. This comes to us from the Department, Division of, and this will be from budgeted funds. Evening. And, uh, I understand we have Captain Growsky in this item tonight. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. Good evening, council members. This is a request to purchase seven marked, semi-marked police patrol vehicles. Six of these vehicles are part of our annual replacement of a portion of the fleet. The seventh vehicle is actually a replacement for a vehicle that was damaged beyond repair and partially paid off through insurance settlement. So seven total. We're also requesting waiver of the sealed bid process as we're using two big consortiums, the state of Michigan and Macomb Counties. As such, using these bids, we take advantage of, quite frankly, the best pricing available for these vehicles. Uh, additionally, these vehicles are from budgeted funds, as you said. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Uh, Councilmember
Madam President.
Councilmember White.
I'm happy to offer an approving resolution. I consent if there's no objection.
Counsel, any objections? Oh, seeing none, we'll place on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Captain Growsky, and, uh, stay safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Item number six is an award of bid. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purchase of calcium hypochlorite, uh, also known as chlorine, and annual cleaning of feeders for the Kirksey Recreation Center pools, Botched Pool, Plymouth Circle Pools, and Sheldon Pool for the period from July twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three from budgeted funds. Um, good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. Uh, as you can see, we are requesting a three-year agreement with Aquatic Source for purchase of calcium hypochlorite tablets, uh, for chlorine for our swimming pools. Um, you can see they were the low bidder, holding their price at two dollar, two dollars and ten cents per pound for three years. We are asking that council authorize this for three years, uh, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Um, Counsel? Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd be more than happy to offer an approving for consent. I was, uh, I, something, uh, new I learned is the fact that we purchased fifteen thousand pounds of chlorine. So, um, and the bids look good through Mitten, so I have no issues if council has none.
All right. Uh, so I believe we put that on the consent agenda. Unless there are any objections, seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Um, item number seven is request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. This comes to us from the Engineering Division from Leo Suave Building Incorporated, in conjunction with construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for property developed on the east side of Wayne Route, south of Curtis Road, and the southwest quarter of Section Nine. Mr. Zolinski.
Good evening, Madam President and City Councilmembers. Again, this is just a housekeeping issue in which, uh, we're getting ready to close out the development. Uh, they've completed all the necessary steps to jet out the storm sewers, uh, recently put additional riprap and addressed the detention area, and we're looking to, uh, uh, get approval from City Council on the stormwater agreement and then, uh, move forward from there. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Counsel? Uh, Councilmember Toy.
Don't move, Madam Chair. Is, uh, consent appro- Yeah, approving on consent if you would like it there. All right. Councilmember Todd.
Thank you, Madam President. If this is okay, I had a question for Mr. Lizan, Mr. Zolinski.
Certainly.
Um, Todd, when, when you're talking about building new developments in the community, I've, I've recently had this question asked multiple times in regards to stormwater drainage. When new homes are built, um, does that help alleviate any stress on the surrounding existing homes? Their stormwater system? Does it, does it make the entire system more efficient, or really there's no difference?
Obviously, on the new developments, when you have several homes, we help, uh, take the sump pump leads and the runoff and the roofs, whatever, and it goes to a, a detention area, whether it's underground or stormwater detention, which restricts the flow to our creeks. In this place, Mystic Creek, there's a flood plain, and so those areas that were, uh, addressed, there's a detention back there. And then again, it's restricted to the outflow. It helps alleviate or, you know, reduce the number of erosion along our creek, causing trees to fall in and, uh, you know, flooding that could impact the habitat itself. So every little bit helps. Again, on the infills, it's a different story because typically there's just one, one property infills, but anything we can do to address the stormwater on new development, uh, we try to, uh, uh, follow our standards, which is usually enclosed storm system in the backyards, take it to a known detention, whether it's underground or, uh, open, open detention, and then it gets restricted, uh, clean water gets restricted out to the, the creeks. Very, very important.
Thank you.
Good question.
All right. Anyone else? Um, we had that offered, I think, by Councilmember Toy for consent. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you okay with that being consent? Okay, thank you. All right. Item number eight is request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreements. This, this come, also comes from the Engineering Division from Livonia State Limited care of Hobbs Street Property, Properties Limited in conjunction with construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for property developed at three one eight zero zero Enterprise, Enterprise Drive in the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-seven. Mr. Zolinski.
Again, uh, this has been a housekeeping issue. This has taken three to four years to complete. They had three different phases. Uh, we're finally taking the initiative to go to City Council because everything's been up to snuff and looking for your approval, then, uh, you know, assist. Um, but they do a great job on maintaining their, their, uh, stormwater management system, uh, along with their other maintenance in that area. Uh, company's out of Toronto, but, uh, looking for your approval on this, uh, to help close this and release the bonds as part of the, uh, requirements for the plan approval. Thank you.
Counsel. Anyone? Approving. Uh, Councilmember Toy?
Approving, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
For consent, if you'd like it. Yes.
All right. Any objections? Seeing none, we'll place on consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Zolinski.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a request for a one-year extension waiver use approval. This comes to us from the Planning Commission. This is, uh, pertaining to petition twenty nineteen dash zero six dash zero two dash zero nine submitted by Newman Smith Architecture, which previously received approval by the City Council on August twelfth, twenty nineteen to expand floor area, renovate the exterior appearance of the building, and modify the vehi- the vehicular parking layout of the existing Salvation Army resale store on the property located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Farmington and Stark Roads, three three six hundred Plymouth Road in the southeast quarter of Section Twenty-eight. This is Council Resolution two six nine dash one nine.
Madam President, if you
Yes.
A few comments. Uh, this is a request for a one-year extension, again, by Salvation Army, uh, Salvation Army. They're expanding into the space next to them. It's about seven thousand additional square feet. It's a space that was formerly occupied by, uh, Tremendo's Italian Market. Long vacant space, complete renovation of the, uh, of the facade, uh, as well as the interior. And, um, like many projects over the past year, the pandemic has caused a delay in the construction process, and I believe Mr. Cunningham or Mr. Cummings is here and can, um, uh, provide any additional details you'd like on this. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, before I go to counsel, uh, Mr. Cummings, would you like to, um, would you like to make some, uh, comments to the council? Uh, let's see, I'm trying to, again, I'm sorry, I have a sticky, the unmute button sticks for whatever reason. Try it again. Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
We go, yes. Good evening, Mr. Cummings.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. I just wanted to kind of give you guys a status of where we were with the project. Um, in September of last year, we had hired a CM to, to work with the, uh, the budget and work with the contractors, getting contractors on board. We had gone through a VE process that, that went through November and December, and then Salvation Army, um, in February approved the budget. So we were on our way to submitting our plans to the city, uh, plan review and engineering. We were probably sometime in April, mid, mid-April is when we were looking to submit our drawings, and then COVID hit. And so Salvation told us at the beginning of April to, to put us on hold for a month to see what was going to happen. Um, so in the beginning of May, they had voted on the project and, and decided to put it on, on, uh, not to approve for it to go forward, that they wanted to kind of have a nine-month to six-month, uh, waiting period just to see what was going to happen. So going forward, we expect them probably be at, by the beginning, uh, at the end of this year, beginning of next year, to, to again, look at it and approve the project to move forward. And then, um, hopefully, if that happens, probably April or May of next year, we'll be again submitting the plans for, uh, review to the city.
All right. Thank you. Um, Counsel, uh, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, obviously COVID, uh, kind of squashed a lot of development. I'm happy to see that you're coming forward, asking for an extension, and fingers crossed that we get out of this and, uh, next spring you'll be, uh, you know, submitting plans. So, uh, after, you know, seeing the space, this is a great addition. I have no, uh, issue offering an approving for either consent or whatever you so choose, Madam President. Up to you.
So you'd like to place on consent?
Fine, ma'am.
All right. Any objections? Uh, Councilmember Toy.
No objection, just a comment, if I may, uh, to Mr. Cummings. Um, just thank you very much for, uh, you know, continuing, uh, this project in spite of all the challenges that we're all having. But, um, as I think our plan director said, that is, uh, an area that has been needing to have something done with it after Tremendo's moved out. Great Italian market, sorry to see him go, but, um, it is what it is. And I also wanted to send out kudos to you and your organization for all the work and dollars and housing and food and clothes that you provide for women and men of human trafficking. You are one of the leads in our state, all around our state, and you are to be commended, at least from my heart, of all you do for that, um, very worthwhile cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm the project manager, project architect for Newman Smith, but I'll pass along what you said to Salvation Army. you said to Salvation Army.
Please do.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, this time we go back to the audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with council, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting at nine eleven. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, IT, thank you.